Good evening, everyone. I will welcome Pastor Tim Multer to the podium from Calvary Chapel Church for our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening, Pastor.
Let us pray. God, we come before you, and we thank you for each and every person that is represented here. We thank you for their heart to serve this community. We ask God that you would give them wisdom for the meeting tonight and the days ahead. We ask that your hand would continue to be upon this community, that you would continue to lead and guide the decisions here tonight and in the future, in a way that would continue to benefit the citizens of this community, that you would continue to help our community be healthy and strong, and that our economy would continue to grow. We ask that you continue to keep the men and women of our community safe, and we just ask that you would continue to grant your wisdom to each person here, and would you be with the decisions as they're being made? And we come before you, and just want to recognize your hand upon all that we do. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
At plenty of reasons, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's 5:30, Monday, July 20th, and I'll call this meeting to the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Hagberg. Krista, are you there? Where people went on. I squeezed it, see her. Quomby.
Here.
Rooker.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Yes.
Here.
Fish.
Here.
We have a quorum. Just a note for the record, yeah, Krista Hagberg is joining us. First item on the agenda this evening is the approval of the agenda, and I will call on Andrew Brumseff, City Administrator, for any additions or corrections to the agenda in front of us.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, members. Good evening. I don't have any additions or corrections as I see it this evening.
I do know Scott Quomby had an issue, a real brief issue regarding election judges that will, I think Lynn can address that in a matter of a minute. Do you want to?
Sure.
Maybe can we just take care of that right now?
Sure.
And just get rid of that? So, just give a real quick background. I know you received an email that was intended for the entire council but didn't go through.
Right. Earlier today, I received an email from a constituent here in town, Bill Schultz, wondering about how our election judge system is handled for absentee ballots. And it isn't a particularly contentious thing, and so I think if we could clarify that publicly for everybody, I think it would be helpful. As I understand it, the county takes care of that. But maybe Lynn, you could address that for us? Would that be all right?
You already hit on the nail on the head. As the city appoints our election judges, the county appoints the absentee ballot board judges, and that is a service that we really want them to continue. Otherwise, it falls on city staff to take care of not only all of that work, but all the costs involved in the absentee balloting process. And we're very thankful for the people that do step up and want to serve the county, but that is their prerogative to appoint their own election judges and absentee ballot boards.
Thank you, Lynn. Thank you, Scott. With that, we will move along. There are no public hearings this evening. There are no bids toward. Under petitions and communications, Rob, would you come up to the?
Your Honor, we need to approve the agenda as well.
Oh, no, we didn't do that. So, we get a motion to approve the agenda. Thank you, Jim and Anthony. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Hagberg. Quomby.
Yes.
Rooker.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Fish.
Roll call, please.
Hagberg. Quomby.
Yes.
Rooker.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Krista, are you there again?
She's muted. Can you unmute her?
Okay.
Can she text to him?
All right.
She's muted on her end.
Okay. Well, we're going to call that one passed. So, now we'll move on to petitions and communications. And Rob, if you want to come forward, please. Tonight, we have a resolution acknowledging the retirement of Rob Skibnis after 37 years with the city of Fergus Falls. So, I'll read this resolution. Whereas Rob Skibnis has submitted his intent to retire effective July 31, 2020, and whereas Rob began employment at the city of Fergus Falls on November 8, 1983, as a refuse carrier, and whereas on September 1, 1985, he transferred to utility maintenance and water, and transferred to the light equipment operator on April 7, 1997. On January 9, 1998, Rob transferred to utility maintenance to water and to the utility maintenance to sewer on September 1, 2005. And whereas on May 29, 2006, Rob transferred to utilities foreman, and on June 23, 2014, Rob became the operations manager and has remained in that position until the present time. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Fergus Falls, Minnesota, to accept Rob Skibnis' resignation and thank him for his 37 years of dedicated service to the city of Fergus Falls. The above and foregoing resolution was offered at a regular council, city council meeting held on July 20, 2020 by council member Jim Fish, who moved its adoption and it was seconded and adopted, I'm sorry, and it was seconded by Justin Anderson, and was adopted by the following vote. Roll call, please.
Hagberg. Quomby.
Yes.
Rooker.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Fish.
That resolution is approved, and I just want to say, Rob, thank you so much for 37 years of dedicated service to the city of Fergus Falls. You've been a fixture in so many ways for the city, and would you like to say a few words, Rob?
Well, I guess I thank the city, past and present, and somebody has faith in it. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
We have a proclamation this evening declaring July 26, 2020, as a day of recognition for Americans with Disabilities Act and their 30th anniversary this year. And we have a couple of representatives. Tom and Lee are here with us this evening. I'm going to go ahead and read this proclamation, the official proclamation of the city of Fergus Falls, Minnesota. Whereas the Americans with Disabilities Act was signed into law by President George H.W. Bush on July 26, 1990, in the presence of over 3,000 disability rights advocates. And whereas in signing the landmark legislation, President Bush proclaimed the ADA to be the world's first comprehensive declaration of the equality of people with disabilities, and acknowledged their rights to be endowed with the same inalienable rights established in the Declaration of Independence. And whereas for the past 30 years, the ADA has sought to ensure that people with disabilities are respected as equal citizens, including equal opportunity to access inclusive education, achieve gainful employment, and fully participate in recreational leisure and social activities in their communities. And whereas the ADA works to ensure that people with disabilities are free from discrimination, treated with respect and dignity, move freely about the community, and live in the least restrictive environment, and whereas our nation is stronger today because of the American Disabilities Act. Now therefore, I, Ben Shire, Mayor of the city of Fergus Falls, do hereby proclaim July 26, 2020, as a day of recognition for the Americans with Disabilities Act 30-year anniversary. All right. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Item number three is a presentation and update on landfill project SW 184, and I will call on our city engineer, Brian Ivaro. Good evening, Brian.
Thank you. Good evening, Your Honor, and members of this council. Some time ago, the PCA has been requesting corrective actions and essentially updating for a site we have located here in city limits. This is the Fergus Falls landfill, SW 184. Due to the complexity and history of this particular site, I requested representatives from Houston Engineering, Bart Schultz and Dennis McAlpine, to give you a brief presentation about the history of this site, the use of the site, closure, and how it relates to the current action before you. I want to note, upon the completion of this, we are requesting approval to accept a professional services proposal in an amount of $84,000. But this amount is reimbursable to the city through our post-closure assurance fund that we're going to cover in this presentation. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Houston Engineering for his presentation.
Thank you, Brian.
Good evening. Thank you. So, interactor, I'm Bart Schultz and this is Dennis McAlpine. So, our purpose here is really to kind of give you a little history of SW 184, and I'm going to switch it to the next slide. Um... Presentation. Question. 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 Question.[836.82]
So, we mowed it twice a year. We also took care of any erosion problems that occurred. So, this was all activities during the post-closure, during, after it closed. And then, we also have contingency action plan. That was also part of this financial assurance money that we collected. So, if you go to the next slide, this is kind of our worksheet that we, that we kept track of. So, back in, in the early 90s, we were tracking all those, those costs that we were projecting out during the post-closure period. And, and we came up with a, with a fund, really at the time of the, the final closure, that the PCA issued a closure document, what they call the closure document. We were one of the first sites that actually got a closure document issued from PCA. It was in February of 2011. And at that time, we had over $3 million in our financial assurance fund that we had collected throughout the active operations of that facility. And that was, that money was, was going to be used to basically care for the facility during the, the 30-year post-closure period, taking care of erosion and, and monitoring and, and the groundwater monitoring. If there was any contingency actions because there were impacts from the site, they would also be covered under that. So, we were just moving along with our annual reporting and stuff, changing of the guard, so to speak, with, with new, new staff at the PCA, new hydrogeologists, new engineers. They're looking at the historical information from the site and said, you know, we would just want to take a look at it. Again, we want to reassess if we're monitoring it correctly, down gradient, and what the monitoring results are really telling us. So, at that point, we got a letter from the PCA requesting us to do some more investigation of the site. That's where I'll turn it over to Dennis, and he can talk about really the current activities that, they are requested at this time?
Yeah. Okay. So, we can move into why we're here. Well, Bart and I are engineers, so we're going to do our best to be an imposter. Our hydrogeologist wasn't able to be with us tonight, got a surgery. So, we're going to do our best to explain the hydrogeology and those aspects of the site. So, we will take some questions at the end. So, feel free to ask a question. We do have a, you know, a thorough working knowledge of this, and Bart's been on this long, long time, as he said, and I have almost 10 years on your site here. So, the short of it is, we got a letter from the PCA, that's why we're here. And as Bart mentioned, you know, changing of the guard in the past, since we've worked through your permit, if you remember back a few years, you have a new permit, and, and we have a lined facility on the other side. Engineering staff has changed, and more recently, hydro, the hydrogeo staff has changed at the PCA. So, they wrote a letter to circle back on the body of work that was done, you know, 10-plus years ago as part of the closure, closure agreement. You go to the next slide. Okay. So, this is your site. And you see the red box is in the lower right-hand side, that's the northern portion of 184. Now, when 184 closed, there is, you know, a contamination plume. That is not uncommon for facilities that are, that are unlined, that are, you know, as historic as this is. You know, this was a burning dumpback in the early, early 1900s. So, the fact that you have something that's escaped beyond your boundary is not unforeseen. That's a, a common issue with facilities of this age. So, the blue hatch you can see, you know, that's the extent of the contamination. So, we have vinyl chloride and VOCs. So, you can see, I put up on the top there, monitored natural attenuation. Why, why are those three words important? Well, 10 years ago, when the closure agreement was signed, that was part of the remedial action that the city took to remedy the problem. Okay? Monitor natural attenuation is the ability of the, you know, the hydrogeo, the, the actual groundwater to fix itself. You know, things will happen over time, and it will correct itself over time. That was part of that process, that at the time, the conditions were conducive, that the underlying, you know, soils could do that. Now, as part of that, because that takes a long time for that to happen, is the city chose as one of their options to put all of the adjacent residents, and you can see all the various names and, and numbers there, on city water. That was a, a large undertaking. But that takes away those receptors. Those people are now all in city water. Back to our letter. It's been 10-plus years since we've evaluated what the extent of that contamination is and has it moved. So, there's a theme through the rest of the next slides here, where you say groundwater moves and conditions are not static. It probably has, it's changed in some way. Has the contamination gotten, you know, better? Eh, probably not. Has it gotten worse? Probably not. But it's changed. So, this is a really, you have a, a really complicated site. I think if Brad were here, he'd say you have a very interesting site. The fact that you have sands on one side and clays on the other and that intermixing, you know, the, the glacier was, we could zoom back, you know, millions of years, the glacier was a really happening thing right out of your landfill. So, there's been a lot of borings that have been provided over the years. And to characterize what's going on at the site, I mean, the red dots, there's 130 soil borings over time. There's 77 monitoring wells that have been placed over time. Now, we are not monitoring all of them wells as part of that closure, but you can see there's a lot of dots, there's a lot of information that's available for the site. So, you can see, all of that information, it wasn't just gathered in one, you know, one giant swoop. It take, it took place over time. So, you can see here, dating back to, I believe there's a, 1988, I don't know if that circle made it on there, but you can see as recent as 2003, lots of bits and pieces of information that we've put together. Now, so you can see, the information that's gathered through all of those, you know, intermediate studies, holes, now, this is the product of what comes out. You can see here, I mean, we won't dive into the particulars. This is just a typical example of what a cross-section looks like. And this is those, you can see like FF9, upper left-hand corner, FF7. This is drawing a line through, you know, a series of wells to get an understanding of what the heck is happening here. And you can see there's a lot happening here. There's a lot of sands, clays, perched water. So, you can see, characterizing, you know, where the extent of, say, contamination or plume, where it's, where it's likely, where it may move, that's not an easy question to answer. If your site was 100% sand, you wouldn't have 130 borings, and you wouldn't have 77 monitoring wells. The fact that you have a complex, you know, geology here leads you to this. So, go to the next slide. What are we going to do with this? So, we're going to take that information, that's, this is our, this is our new purpose now. We're going to take a lot of that information, a lot of that historic stuff, and just with the evolution of technology, we're going to try and put that together spatially, so we can gather a better understanding of the site. We have a lot of these cross-sections that's, you know, that reside in, you know, I refer to it as etch-a-sketch, etch-a-sketch on a, on a piece of paper, but to put that, that together spatially to get a better understanding of the site. So, you know, as part of the process, and I glossed over it a few slides back, you know, we're going to go and update that monitoring that was done, you know, 10-plus years ago for those, for those wells that were beyond your boundary, you know? Big question. Are they still there? Are they abandoned? You know? You put them on city water, the well could still be, they could still use it for a non-podable source. The PCA wants us to update that, update that understanding. So, that's part of the, up in the next slide. So, that's part of it. Update those down gradient, what that information is. You know, initiate our modeling effort that puts together that picture, you know, spatially of how this thing has changed. You know, groundwater, it's not static, it's changed. So, how has that changed? And then, determine the need if there's, you know, additional wells. You know, from the get-go, we understand that there's probably a few holes in the monitoring network. There's one or two wells that are a little shallow. We are getting hits of, you know, vinyl chlorides and those VOCs a little lower. It would have been nicer than the wells would have been a little lower, but again, the passage of time and things moving, you didn't know at the time. So, you know, I think what we'd share with you is, I think that Brad should come back if, you know, if wanted, to share some of the results of this process, when we go out and we monitor, and we get these results, and we build that model, and come back and report to you on what did we actually find? And you go back to the slide, I want to say it's slide, uh, slide seven, you know? How will that have changed as part of this process? How will that blue line have, have shifted? And does it impact anybody? And are anybody's wells nearby that we didn't know about that shouldn't be there?
What is the nearest well to that property now?
Uh, we can stick on slide seven there. So, you know, you can see the, the yellow with the crosshairs on it, like, you know, Geezy is just to the north. I, I won't even attempt to pronounce the name on, uh, parcel 1414?
Crenshaw.
Crenshaw, there you go. I wouldn't have got that. So, you know, those are the two, those are the two closest, but you can see, you know, the, if you were to go to the, the slide, so advanced two slides from this. You know, those arrows, those are directions of groundwater flow. So, are we as concerned about the north? Not so much. You know, more to the northwest is a, you know, that likely, the likely intercept.
You know, one thing I want to clarify too is, the PCA isn't saying that our analysis, our prior analysis is wrong. They just feel that we need to update it to see if it's, um, any further out than what it was. They recognize that the vinyl chlorides were degrading at the time. When we looked, when we took a comprehensive look at this back 10 years ago, they, they acknowledged that they were degrading, which was the natural attenuation part of it. They just want us to update that to see if it's, if it's moved or not. Because groundwater is, the conditions aren't static, and they just wanted to check really the status of, of how the plume was moving.
You're regulated by your boundary.
Sure.
That's where you have to, you know, once it goes out of the boundary, that determines from, you know, Bart was mentioning a contingency action, okay, to a corrective action. So, contingency, we thought it may happen. Corrective action, it happened. So, you guys are in a corrective action, sometimes referred to as remedial action. It's happened. You've crossed your boundary. You need to do something about it, which you have been.
Yep.
You know, monitoring.
Is there, and to back to Bart's, at the beginning, you talked about the, the fund. There's, there's money that was set aside for the 30 years monitoring. Is that, is, is this funding?
That's what it's for.
It's in here, right? So?
Yep, that's exactly. And so, when, when we did it, we had this big table of all the possible things that could happen, and we look at probability of those happening. And that's how we established those annual amounts that we needed. You saw on that one table where we tracked in the actual closure document where we have 3.1 million in that fund. That's how we came up with that number throughout the operational period of that.
Sure.
There are communities that do not have that. I mean, I guess as a compliment to the, the city and their foresight to, to have those funds in place, you guys are way ahead of the game. You can imagine not having any of these funds and then, you know, still having these requirements, you know?
Sure. Sure.
On our new line sales, we shouldn't have to go through all this, is that correct?
With the current permit, what we, you know, direction on the permit was to go with the liner, so that we would not be under the criteria of groundwater monitoring at the time you picked. Now, will that maintain the status quo when you go through a permit renewal?
No.
Hard, hard, you know?
All depends on who's there doing this.
Depends who's there doing this.
Yeah.
But, you know, we, there are some monitoring points, you know? We are collecting some data from 572, which is, you know, it's proof of, you know, operations. You know, we were just out at the site this afternoon, working on, you know, helping install an underdrain, you know? That's something that we do monitor. And if it monitors clean, you know, that's just further support that, do we really need monitoring? Well, probably not. We can make a really strong case for it if that maintains, you know, clean.
Sure. So, right now, what we need is a resolution to approve the professional services agreement with Houston Engineering in the amount of $84,000. Does someone like to?
I'll offer that.
Jim? Tom? Second. Other questions for Bart or Dennis?
Good luck.
It's going to take us a few months.
Sure.
You know, to, to come back, you know, later in the fall, early winter, you know, it's going to be, it'll be a good story. What did we find?
Is there a deadline as to when? I mean, when do they expect you to have it done?
Um, so, we've, we've worked through and developed a work plan. I mean, they want it.
Yep.
You know, it's, it's this year, and we want to make it happen in 2020.
Right.
They have been, you know, reasonable to work with. It's not, we got a letter and we want you out there, you know?
Yep.
30 days from now, they've been, you know, some of this has been collaborative to figure out, you know, that process.
And $84,000, will that come out of this $3 million fund you've referenced?
Any other questions? If not, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. Thank you. Thank you, Bart. Next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. There's three items in your packet. Also, I believe there'll be a copy on the board. If anyone would like to discuss any of those items individually, we will remove them. Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution approving the consent agenda as approved. Thank you, Brent. Thank you, Carolyn. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, first item is a resolution approving a purchase agreement with Zachary and Linda Strand in the amount of $126,000 for the property located at 725 West Maple Avenue. And I'll call on City Administrator Andrew Bremseth. Good evening, Andrew.
Good evening. Thank you, Your Honor, members. Before you this evening's purchase agreement, as the mayor mentioned, at this address, 725 West Maple Avenue, city staff has received several calls over the past years related to stormwater concerns. We have been able to get out there and verify and, and witness those concerns. I know a couple of councilmembers have over the last couple of years, and I think the mayor was out there one day as well. So, we've seen the, the concern, the issue that, that continues to come up, and we understand that, that it exists. We previously engaged Interstate Engineering to prepare a preliminary engineering report to study the stormwater drainage of this area and provide options to address any concerns. After reviewing the three options that Interstate gave us at the time, we determined none of them were financially feasible or practical. The other thing I would note is that the storm sewer in this area was designed back in the 1950s, and knowing that if we were to make any changes that may or may not work to address this problem, we do restart the statute of limitations as it relates to that. So, keep in mind, I said, you know, not practical, in a sense, some of those options that were presented to us. After several conversations with the property owners, it was determined that purchasing the property from them is the most financially feasible option for the city to address these concerns. As a result, we did get three comparable real estate sales to try to find an appropriate amount as it relates to this purchase. We found three comparables ranging from $86,815 up to $118,500. This home in question, this property, has greater square footage than those comps, so it's reasonable that the amount exceeds that high comp. And there's also a separate lot that comes with this transaction just behind the, the home itself. It's not a huge piece of property, but there are two separate parcels that are involved here. The seller of the property is proposing to sell the property to the city for $126,000. Their original offer was $128,000 for transparency's sake, so it did come down a little bit, and it falls within a range that I think is certainly appropriate and acceptable. We don't need to figure this out tonight, but there are three things I think the city can do with the property. The first being reselling the property with full disclosure of the stormwater issues and concerns. We know what the water does. We know exactly what happens when there's a rain event, and we can disclose that to a potential future buyer. We could attempt to sell the, to sell the home and garage till we moved off-site. They're both in good condition and are certainly, have years of life left in them. Or we could simply demolish the, the property as it sits today and have green space in the area for the water to, to drain into. So, again, I don't need to know that answer tonight. Tonight, we're looking at the purchase agreement, and if we want to move forward, the city attorney has drafted the purchase agreement. That's within your packet, and he will be taking care of the transaction. And then, we do not have a closing date at this point in time. The seller is waiting to see how this goes this evening, and then will begin to search for, obviously, a, a new place to live or reside, and we said we can be flexible to, to work with him on that as he finds a new situation. So, that's, that's what's before you this evening. The $126,000 purchase price will come out of the stormwater fund, and there are sufficient funds available to move forward with this at this time.
Thank you, Andrew. Someone like to offer a resolution, and we'll discuss? Thank you, Brent.
I'll second, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin. A second. Any questions for Andrew? Any comments? I think, I will, I have been out there, I know, Brent, you've been out there, Justin, you've been out there, and to move, to move forward on this and just to move past this is, is just going to be a good thing, I think, for everyone. I think, when you agree those that have been to the property, it's time to move on from this. So, thank you to the staff for, for the work on this. Any questions of Andrew before we call for the roll?
No, I think, I think the, what we do with the property, we can make that decision once we own it.
Yeah, I agree.
How long have the, how long have the current residents lived there? Have they been there for a long, long time, or not so long?
I don't recall. It's been over a decade.
Yeah, I was going to say 14 years, maybe.
Yeah.
14 years, maybe? I don't remember exactly. All right. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. Item number two is a resolution initiating the Alcott Avenue pedestrian crossing improvement project. Brian, you borrow?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I'll try to move quickly on this one. This is a request some time ago to look at the feasibility of having a pedestrian crossing on Alcott Avenue. I've identified two potential locations, one being at Martin Street and the other being on West Side Drive. Each, I want to note, each location does provide a little complexity, however, we can't, we can overcome it, primarily on elevations to maintain EDA accessibility guidelines. Posing an estimated option for number one, which is the Martin Street, the amount of about $10,100, or option two, which is a pedestrian crossing at West Side Drive with an amount of about $21,000, we feel we could budget some of this for a city sidewalk program. My general intent is, what the council's desires are, are you looking at option one, option two, or potentially all of the options?
Thank you, Brian. I know personally, the people that live in that area that have talked to me about it suggested Martin Street. So, I don't live in that area, but that's, that's what I've heard from the people who live in that area. Anthony, you've lived out there.
I, I would, I would agree, option one, particularly when Hillcrest has any sports activities, you know, that's, that's the one that gets used the most.
Yeah.
I would actually make a...
Resolution? Going with option one, moving forward with option one? Thank you, Anthony. Second, from Caroline. Any further discussion? Scott?
I think that as the trail system and everything that we've talked about on that end of town gets further developed, we may come to a point where we'd like to add that second option. At this point, the demand seems to be greater for the Martin one, and I think it's appropriate to just do that one at this time.
Certainly.
Certainly.
The, the other part I would say is that people are kind of typically, when driving, you know, that was the old city mile limit, and there's a definite slowdown of traffic at that point when people hit, you know, a more built-up area.
Sure.
I have one other question.
Yes, Scott.
Brian, as you were developing this, was there any consideration for the possibility of a little bump out, like some of the things that have been talked about for downtowners that just striping and then just the curb cuts only?
Uh, no, honestly, we did not get to extent. We first evaluated as a, from a pedestrian standpoint. Bump out, however, would be a potential next option. However, the cost associated with that would be, can, I would venture to say conservatively a little bit higher than what we're indicating right here, right now, so.
Yeah, expect it would. And I don't think the snow removal guys would appreciate it either, but just wondered if that was something that had been considered.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. Under presentation of claims tonight, we have claims in the amount of $1,349,119.14. And if any questions, we'll direct to our Finance Director, Bill Sonmore.
I'll offer the resolution. Pay the bills.
Thank you. Jim?
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. There are no board, committee, or department reports on tonight. Under reports from staff and administrative officers, we have an update on our capital improvement plan, and I'll call on our Finance Director, Bill Sonmore. Good evening, Bill.
Thank you, Your Honor. Included a memo in the packet about the capital improvement plan. We came to you last February with a wonderful goal of really, you know, upgrading that whole process, allowing for more participation from the city council, as well as, you know, the public and the planning commission, and going through planning commission hearing for all that. Well, as the pandemic, you know, kind of struck and things got closed down, all this came to a halt. So, my thought is, should we just put a halt to it for this year? We'll come back and start it over again next year and try that process with that calendar again. Obviously, we are in the budget process right now. We're working with the tax levying committee. We will be including all the projects that are, have been initiated, that are planned for 2021, that are in the works. So, we'll get, you know, in 2021, what should be in 2021 for projects, but doing that good long-term planning process, thinking, let's bring that back to you at the beginning of 2021 and hope for a better year on that is kind of our goal. But, want to see what your feelings are. Time is short as well, because we are at the end of July, and to try and do a good process and get it through a public process, and you know, we've all been talking about projects throughout the year as well, certainly through our council meetings and things that are initiated, and that's what we'll build in, and we'll show that as part of the budget for that as well. Now, our city charter does call that the five-year capital improvement plan be included as an attachment to the budget. Talked with our city attorney, we thought, you know what? Because of the way this year is and the way it's turning out, we're probably okay, you know, I'd like to have a good document attached to that budget rather than just throwing something attached to it. So, I think I would like to just leave that off. But certainly, within that capital improvement fund, we'd have the detail of the projects that are in 2021. You just wouldn't have the detail for '22 and beyond this year. So, see what you guys think of that.
Yeah, well, it certainly makes sense to me. I think we need to do the, when we do that capital improvement, we want to do it right, right? Not just a piece of paper, not just to go through the exercise, and I think that was the intention of staff this year. So, it would seem to me to make sense to wait until January of 2021 and relook at that to get that implemented for that calendar year. Other thoughts, Scott?
I understand the practical reality of how this would play out, and I tend to agree that trying to force something through by the end of the year is probably a difficulty that's not worth trying to do. But as far as how it would actually play out and what it, what would be the difference,